Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting for the School Town of Speedway for Tuesday, August 13th, 2019. We are working from a 13-item agenda, and the first item is to approve the minutes of the July 9th meeting.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes from the July 9th meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Debbie. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
[inaudible]
Thank you. Pass this 5-0. So I'll go ahead and open that hearing.
Wow.
Seeing no comments, I'll go ahead and close that hearing. Item number three: Adopt the 2020 Capital Projects Plan.
Mr. President, I recommend that we adopt the advertised 2020 Capital Projects Plan.
Laura?
I move that we adopt the 2020 Capital Projects Plan.
Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? We'll sign two copies.
The enrollment update that you had in your packet that was delivered to you last week has changed. The enrollment actually increased this morning by, or today, by 10 students. Speedway Schools currently has 1,844 students in our schools. If you look at the enrollment, we have 53 elementary sections, and of 50 of those 53 sections, or 94 percent of those, have 22 or less students in it. The three that are above that, we have one at 24, one at 25, and one at 26, and we're monitoring those carefully to see if they grow. Our secondary classes, our high school has 545 students, and our junior high at this time has 281 students. Our, the average class sizes in the, in the junior high school is somewhere around 19 students, and the average class load at the secondary level is about 126 students. The, what I'm here to report is, is the enrollment is very healthy and growing daily, which is good for the budget, and we've got to watch it for classroom space as we, as we move forward.
Well, thank you. Any questions? The board?
What, what happens if the classes go big, too big?
That's a great question. It's not necessarily a loaded question, but it's a question that we monitor anything over 22. So if it gets too big, we start the discussion at 22, 23, 24, 25. What if? We check it twice a day, and if it does go that route, we start the conversation adding instructional assistance immediately. That's without question, we have that conversation. Possibly even two instructional assistants, because there's a big difference having 24 and then having 24 maybe with 14 new students that don't speak English. So if you have ENL population, or if you have a high special ed population, that's a whole different ballgame than 24, with or without. Once it gets to 25, 26, 27, that's when past practice has been that we sit down, we start talking about, is there room? Is there a place that we can possibly break that? The problem is, is Mr. Disney can talk a little bit about this, with the middle of August that we're in, most public schools are already in session. So there's not necessarily a lot of teachers on the shelf that, if we get some inquiry from other teachers, typically they're employed with somebody else, and that's not a practice we like to do, say, hey, why don't you leave that school and come to us? Even though it happens to us, we don't do it to other people.
We have advertised for position, we've posted a position, just, we're not ready yet to, to split classes, to add teachers. We have posted for that, and there's just, there's a teacher shortage out there, and the, the teachers that, that we're getting for this right now, and this has only been there for a couple of days, are stu, are teachers that, that would be great for us, but we're just not ready to, we're not ready to do that yet. Keep monitoring. It's kind of hard to split 26 and not split 25, you know, split 20, 24 and not split the two that are above it. So, like I said, we're monitoring this very closely, and I think Dr. Treville said it well, it also depends on the makeup of the classroom. It's not a given that when you get to 26, we immediately start splitting it. It's the makeup of the students in the classroom that makes that determination, as long, as far as the number also.
Most of our schools' elementaries minus Newby, we have some flexibility. We can, we can move to another classroom, possibly. That means we're taking away from something else, but classrooms are our highest priority, small class sizes, great teachers, it's what we live on. So there, there's going to have to be some discussion on Newby down the road here soon, because we're just out of rooms, and we're using every square inch of that place for a regular classroom. So, those are great questions. Our budget, or I'm sorry, our enrollment, which ties into our budget, is very healthy right now, 1,844, versus like what we wrote last year at this time, sitting at 1,790s. That's a big hit for what we predicted at 1,850, 1,860 last year. So, things are moving in the right direction. This is a good sheet, and we're still safe. Like John said, Mr. Disney, we had three classrooms over the 22 market, 24, 25, and 26, and I think most corporations around the state would love to have that across the board. We have three out of 50. So we have some pretty good numbers going on right now. So we'll just hope that a lot of these new students are going to be in the right spots, and we're going to be fine for this year. We can get by.
Any other questions? Okay. Let's move on to item number five, which is to present the 2020 school budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I'd like to thank a certain person, her name's Nancy Johnson. Ms. Johnson has all her regular work to do during the summer, and in about July, her door shuts, but people keep opening it, because that's just who she is. She helps people all day long. But her dedication, her precision, her thinking is second to none, and I want to say thank you to you during this meeting and say, hey, I know you do a month and a half of work on top of your other month, like a lot of people do in the world, but you do it, and I want to say thank you for this, because this is a, an outstanding budget that you put together on this. So thank you, Mrs., Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
This budget, you're welcome. This budget has been prepared, like from the assumptions we had at the last month, at the last meeting, estimating revenue low, expenses high, like we always do. The reality is, we'll spend less than the appropriation, and we'll receive more revenue than predicted, and that the financial health of the school corporation will remain excellent if this budget is adopted and approved. The budget directs on, on our assumptions, even higher percentage of funding to the classrooms and schools. It reduces the average class size across the board, which are already low, by utilizing every room at Newby at this point, 13 out of 13 rooms used for regular instruction, that's the facts, and we, most of the rooms at Wheeler, where we have a few rooms left in regular classrooms. This budget also continues the instruction to our elementary high-ability students, and it supports additional services to our fast-growing refugee ENL students. This is what we said we're going to do, and this is what the budget, budget was built on. If you remember, two years ago, the state of Indiana decided to move our overall budget from multiple funds down to two funds. The two funds that we've talked about last year, I won't reiterate or read from what that was, since we've gone through it for a year, our two major funds is the Education Fund, which is on the screen, the small screen to my left, and the, the second one is Operations. We're going to talk about those two funds the most, along with the referendum, the debt fund, and also the rainy day. So there's five funds that we're going to talk about, and how this budget was built, and I'll try to go through out of the weeds, but kind of a general idea of where the money's coming in and where it's going out to, which is important. The first fund is the Education Fund. Mr. Disney has it pulled on the screen. Our major revenue or income coming in is from the state support. That's over $13 million, of 78 percent of our budget, our revenue from the Education Fund, which provides the appropriations for our regular instruction, special education instruction, enrichment, remediation, school administration, a chunk of that, ECA, community services, those are all the appropriations that go out of education. This is the trick. I want to pause. Never before have we had to move more people and have the money follow the people to the correct fund. This is why. From the state, a few years ago, they said, this is going to be the best thing ever. You're going to have two funds, you're going to have flexibility, you can move the people, it's going to be a great thing. Months after they said that, they said you can only transfer 15 percent. That hit us last year, and they said you need to get your funds in line. So our two funds, you're going to see a lot of transferring from one fund to the other, even for example, money from the Education Fund moving to another fund, such as Operations, and you're going to see Operations transfer when we get to it, transfer back to Education. They're going to go back and forth, Education, Operation, referendum. That is because we want to make sure our people are in the right spot through the state of Indiana, what they suggest and recommend, where people should be. So if you see a little higher number than last year, that's fine, in the big picture, it all bounces out. So we're just kind of moving people with the money. So the Education Fund, hey, that's our big one, it's $16 million, 16.6, and our appropriation matches at 16.6 for those people. That's our big fund, that's where we pay the majority of our teachers out of. The second fund is that third one that Speedway has a, not necessarily advantage, but we pass this each year, because our taxpayers believe in small class sizes, great teachers, pay the teachers, and we, we'll show you our results later on why that's a good thing. But the referendum is the second fund I'd like to talk about. The revenue that we have coming in, that we, in this budget, is at 5.5223. Again, that's the rate that we charge our community. That's less than last year, just a little bit, but it's less. So once we have the property tax levy come in at $4 million, you can see that we have other funds that fund this, this fund, fund this fund. The cash balance that we already have at hand, the excise tax, commercial vehicle tax, financial institute tax, which is fit from the banks, that's where we get our money for the referendum. What do we pay out of the referendum? Again, instruction, regular, special ed, enrichment, remediation, it's heavy on the student support side. That's what the referendum pays for, along with administration, maintenance of buildings, security services, as we go through. You can see there is a transfer to the Education Fund from the referendum that, guess what, supports more teachers. It ties it all together. We have the people in the right spots to where we don't have to transfer at the end of the year 15 percent. We want to be compliant to what the state's asking us to do. As you can see down at the bottom, there's a small chart, if we can catch that on the, for the camera. I upped the home values. If you're in Speedway or the town of Speedway, you know that houses right now are at a pretty good market price, a pretty good price for people that are buying. In other words, they're a lot higher than what we had back in 2012 and 13. So we added about $10,000 on this. Once we added this to say, hey, what are people paying for the referendum, it's, it's pennies more on the month. We're already paying about $12 per month on a $94,000 house, $94,000 house, I upped it to $99,000, and I showed that we are only talking about a few pennies more to $13 a month. So nothing is drastically changing, it's basically the same, if not less, overall for the referendum fund. The third page is the Operations Fund. Nancy worked and worked on this Operations Fund, because a lot of things come out of this. This is kind of a broadside, but where do we get the money? We, again, property tax levy, this is a rate that we, we come up with, and we, we set this rate high. We know, and every year we go through this, we're going to set it at .42, 4207, and we send it back through the state, and it always comes back less, and the last page will explain that. So if we ask for .42, we project, we predict that it's going to come back at a rate of .36, just like in the past, every year, it's typically four, five, six cents less than what we, than what we asked for. Where does the money come, come from? Operations, the property tax levy, 54 percent of the $2 million, and also the transfers from the other funds. That funds our appropriations for the central office, maintenance of buildings, maintenance of grounds, the people, technology, the operating physical plant, just to name a few things. Most of our professional services, construction improvement, copiers, guys, this goes on and on and on, on what we pay out of the Operations Fund to keep the school corporation on the business side, keep it running, the facilities, the maintenance, the people that go that route. Again, 4207, it's very similar to last year, and I, we believe it's going to come in at The last two are the short ones. The nice part of the debt fund, Mr. Disney, if you would please, we don't have much, we don't have much at all. This is for the textbooks that we have to pay for. Last year was .0010, this year we're asking .0019. So we almost got a penny more, we almost got that, but we're looking at about $12,000. And if you look around the state, this is very minimal, very minimal, very minimal compared to anybody else around. So we're very grateful to have this, we don't have a lot, we don't have any debt on our side. The final one, I'll be brief on this, the rainy day, we've talked about, this board has talked about many options of where we go. At this point in time, we have a cash balance of $772,000. The appropriations right now could be contracted services or maintenance of equipment, that's pretty flexible to where maybe some decisions we have to make soon on how we're going to spend that money. So that's the rainy day. Finally, the next page is, I think, what everybody wants to get to. What does all this mean? Well, from the last year, '19 to '20, we have it highlighted on the screen, in 2019, we're at .8721, and after all the changes and moving people and all the hard work Nancy Johnson has done, we predict that we're going to be at .8842. That's going to be a slight increase of almost a penny. So compared to last year, it's a mirrored budget in the big picture, there's some movement inside of it, but it's basically, we want to follow state law, we want to make sure that we're doing the right things, putting people where they belong, and hopefully we can reduce that for the next year, we don't have to do so much moving. Those are the five funds. Again, the two big ones, the Education Operations, the referendum, sitting right at 522, with the operations advertised at 42, .42, coming in at 36, that's what we predict, and that, Mr. President, is the school budget presentation.
Any questions from the board?
What was?
Nancy, thank you very much.
Thank you. What was the head count we used to estimate state support?
We started at 1,792. The last run we did, we bumped it up to 1,834.
Correct.
To balance the budget.
Okay.
Great question.
And we use the new, different state appropriation that we expected to get because of the new...
That's correct, 311 new, $1,000 new money.
Yeah.
We actually estimated high on that, for the teacher salaries of not going to...
Right, right.
Any other comments? No, I think we're good.
Okay. I am... Do I need to make the motion approval? Seeking approval by consensus to advance this budget to the Speedway Town Council for consideration and action. Mr. President?
Okay, great.
Please do.
Thank you. Item number six: Approve the resolution authorizing the superintendent to reduce the 2019 budget appropriations across all funds as necessary to fund the 2020 budget.
In the previous section, thank you, in the previous section, the budget assumptions began with the practice of listing appropriations high, like we always do. This is true for the current year, '19. In reality, we are in the, near the end of the calendar year, we have an accurate idea of how much less we will spend than we have appropriated. It is the difference between these two amounts that provides a school corporation with a high cash balance. We use the cash balance in the calculation of the next year's budget, and to do this, the school corporation must officially take action to reduce the current appropriation, as this generally happens during December, Christmas break, when Nancy is here, by herself sometimes, when a board meeting is not scheduled. We ask the board to adopt this resolution authorizing the treasurer and the superintendent to reduce appropriations in 2019, not to spend funds, but to reduce to the extent necessary to fund the 2020 budget. This most often occurs in the Capital Projects Fund.
Laura?
I move that we approve the resolution authorizing the superintendent to reduce the 2019 budget appropriations across all funds as necessary to fund the 2020 budget.
Thank you, Laura. Tom?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Pass this 5-0. Chris Johnson, if you'd like to go ahead and exit the meeting. We appreciate your time and your efforts.
Thank you.
Busy day tomorrow.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Item number seven is to designate equipment as surplus for disposal.
Thank you. Enclose our extensive lists of equipment, which have been replaced over the course of the past year. Although no item reached the threshold of materiality and value of $5,000, we still prefer to recommend to the board review this list and designate the contents as surplus and of no value, so the equipment may be discarded. And like always regarding technology items, we'll retain a vendor to destroy all related components of that, such as, we replaced 140 staff machines this last year, and they're nine, 10, 11 years old, so they will all be discarded at that point, and the memories will be destroyed for that. So my recommendation is to designate this equipment as surplus for disposal, please.
I'll make a mention to designate the equipment as presented for surplus, as surplus for disposal.
Thank you. Laura?
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Pass this 5-0. Item number eight: Approve food service employees 2021 wages and salaries.
Mr. President, I recommend to approve wages as listed on the enclosed list of cafeteria employees. The recommendation is 25 cents an hour increase, and we'll bring our minimum wage to 1,265 from 1,245 last year.
Thank you. Laura?
I move that we approve the food service and toys 2021 wages and salaries as presented.
Thank you. Can you, Tom?
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Pass this 5-0. Item number nine: Approve extended contracts.
I recommend that we approve the following extended contracts, as has been done in previous years. They are: P. Joseph Smith, guidance counselor at junior high for five days; Kevin Burke, assistant to director for transportation, at $2,200; Charles Bennett, guidance counselor at high school for five days; Misty Davenport, guidance counselor at high school for five days; and Sarah Ackerman for the innovations class, one period.
Laura?
I move that we approve the extended contracts as presented.
Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Pass this 5-0. Item number 10: Acknowledgement of grants received.
Mr. President, I recommend that we accept by consensus the grants in $69,657.57.
Thank you. Item number 11: The personnel report.
In the personnel report this, this month, we have, I ask that you consider the acceptance of recognitions, resignations of Kyle Owens, who's a high school engineering and technology teacher, Sarah Peño, who's a cafeteria worker at the junior high school, and Angela Borjes, who was a cafeteria worker at the high school. Also ask that you recommend to employ Dr. David A. Nicollet as the engineering technology teacher at Speedway High School. Elizabeth Ferguson on a temporary contract as a homeschool advisor at Wheeler. Angie Huskerson, four-hour cafeteria employee at the high school. Megan Evans, a four-hour cafeteria worker at Wheeler Elementary School. Also I'd ask that, or recommend the following extracurricular positions, there are 14 positions in your notes that were listed, that we have filled since the start of school. Those positions, like I said, are in your notes, and they range from...
Those positions, like I said, are in your notes, and they range from sponsors, academic advisors, and assistant coaches. At this time, but I'd ask that you approve the personnel report as presented.
Tom?
I'll move that we accept the personnel report as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Debbie. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Pass this 5-0. Item number 12, recognition of visitors and other business.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. We do have one other piece of business under other business, Mr. Disney, if you will please. Mr. Borm, if you could step up to the podium.
All right. Back in the spring, we acknowledged the two of the high school administrators who were staffs purposely left you off that list, because we knew that a piece of company was going to fall. So at this time, we'd like to recognize you not only as the administrator of the school, the forest of school, which is outstanding accomplishment. What took place over in that, over in that plutorium is, has your name written all over. So congratulations, thank you for what you do for our school, and your help with the AP program and with our administration here.
Is there any other business? Well, we will adjourn to approved claims. Thank you.